Good evening. The City of Riverbank Regular City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Board meetings are now in session. Today is Tuesday, February 26, 2019. It is 6:00 PM. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Roll call.
Council Authority Member District One Barbara Louise Uribe.
Here.
Council Authority Member District Two Cindy Fosse.
Here.
Council Authority Member District Three Cal Campbell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Deline Barbara Martinez.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien.
Here. There'll be no changes to the agenda. Any council or authority member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest in any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. Say and none, we move on to public comments. At this time, the members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and with the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person and each person shall may speak once during this time and cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the City Council LRA Board. Are there any public comments?
Hello, my name is Evan Nash and I am a resident of Riverbank. I have two hats. The first one is lower, okay, is with Community Praise Tabernacle and just basically to give the information that Love Riverbank will be on Saturday, April 13th. So I wanted to give that information with the date to City Council. The next hat I'm wearing is as a parent and as a resident of the city and it's kind of been on my mind to come when I had this experience prior and I don't know if the city could do anything about individuals smoking cannabis at public parks. So I've been at Jacob Myers Park twice and parents unfortunately were smoking there at the river and another time they're smoking in the car and I don't know all the laws with everything that's passed and it's making it legal now, but I don't know if the city can post signs that that is not allowed in public parks, especially where a lot of children are present. Also at the skate park, unfortunately, we've had to leave several times the skate park because individuals just want to skate and smoke at the same time and as a taxpayer. And as a parent of small children, I don't feel that that's the best place or the best environment for a family. And those are my comments. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Any further public comment?
Your Honor and honorable members of the council, my name is Michael Soto and I'm a over 28-year resident of Riverbank, California and my concern is the billing of the water. I don't know if that's been brought up before, but we're being charged at some kind of allotment rate and at the same time, we're also encouraged to be conserving water. It was my fortune to realize that one day I had left my water running on. I left it on for four hours and I was expecting my bill to be higher and it wasn't. It didn't even make a dent in the bill. So it's like I'm paying for water that I'm not using and I'm encouraged to conserve water and yet where's the water going? I mean, if I'm paying for a certain amount of water, I believe that the citizens should get some kind of credit for conserving, you know, each month or every period, it's the same amount of billing and yet I don't use all the water. That four-hour period that I spoke about proved that I'm not using all the water. I mean, if I had a tank, I would save all the water that I'm not using, but I can't do that. I feel that it's wrong to be charged for an allotment of water that we're not using. I mean, if you go buy something in the store you don't use at all, you put it in your refrigerator or you put it in your cupboard, you know, it doesn't disappear. So that's what I'm, my complaint about is the way the water is being billed. The residents of Riverbank should be billed for the units they use and not for an allotment. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Hi, Danielle Gravel Oakdale. I am one of the board members of the Riverbank Cannabis Collective and we are hosting a mixer for business after hours hosted by the Modesto Chamber of Commerce at our business on March 28th. So all local business owners are welcome to attend. It's a good networking event. So if you have information, flyers, business cards, please bring them. And maybe a little bit of an out-there idea on consumption. People have bars they can consume in. I know cannabis is new to the city of Riverbank, but you might want to think about onsite consumption options for your dispensers that already exist so people can consume in a safe environment and not out in the public or just be in their homes.
Any further comment? Say and none. I'd like to have staff comment on the second comment.
Sure, happy to. And it's, you're right on. People should be billed for the proportionate usage. So one of the things that we've been working on for a number of years here is a full overhaul of our meter system, which will basically go to a radio read system. So whatever you use, and we're kind of testing the model right now to make sure that it's going to reflective or accurately reflect, you know, what usage is. So you'll see in a future bill on the very top your usage. It'll show gallons used essentially. And what will happen when that goes live is that you will be billed for however much you use. So if you, the good side to it is that it encourages conservation and the less you use, you just get the basic base billing. The downside to it though is that if you happen to leave your tap on and it runs all night long, you may have a larger than normal bill the following month. So that is in the works and you'll seeing that Maricela, probably the next billing cycle, the test run or the one thereafter. Two, you'll go to say. And we'll have a newsletter and the things that'll explain exactly how it works. And then before it's actually live from a billing perspective, where you're actually getting charged that, we'll have all of that information in there too. If you want to connect with Maricela or Anna in the back, they can explain how the process works.
They'll rebuild a base rate and then anything above and beyond that.
Yeah, so there's a base amount.
So you're being charged the base rate, okay? And as soon as we get our act together, you'll be charged for your base rate and anything above and beyond that, you'll be charged more.
I would be happy with that. I would, you know, it's like if I'm not using all the water, I should be getting credit for that water. It's like you turn it around and selling it back to me again.
No, that's not, that's not really what is happening. We had such a difficult time with metering and getting our financial software to talk to each other that we just kept it at the base rate until such time as we can move forward with the correct billing. Okay, and we're moving on to the consent calendar consisting of Item 3A wave readings. Item 3B approval of January 22nd, 2019 City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority minutes. Item 3C resolution to approve the appointments of Irma Khan and Renee Garcia to Riverbank Housing Authority Board Commission. Item 3D approval of IT Support Services Contract with Mid Valley IT. Item 3E consideration of a resolution approving, authorizing, and directing execution of the amended and restated Joint Exercise and Powers Agreement relating to the California Statewide Communities Development Authority. Do we have anyone wishing to pull any of the items? May I have a motion?
Excuse me, excuse me, just a moment. There will be a revision to the minutes in Item 3.1B and it'll reflect that there was no invocation that evening. Thank you.
You had Charlie Neal do that. He did it from home. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
As amended.
As amended.
I second.
We have a motion to approve the consent calendar as amended and a second.
Council Authority Members Campbell.
Yes.
Fosse.
Yes.
Uribe.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 5.1, a resolution approving the fiscal year 2018, 2019 mid-year budget amendments.
Thank you, Mayor. Our Assistant City Manager and Director of Finance, Maricela Garcia, will give this report this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Tonight, we have for you the fiscal year 2018-19 mid-year budget review. Just as a brief overview, our mid-year budget provides us an opportunity to review the projections that we made back in June of 2018 and that we presented to you for adoption. Our final budget was to be presented after our labor negotiations were completed, but those weren't completed until November, so we felt it prudent to bring back any mid-year budget adjustments related to our final budget as well as the negotiations during mid-year. We also make adjustments based on new information that we've received, whether that's revenue enhancements or expenditures that we've seen have been trending towards increases. And it also provides our departments with opportunities to request new appropriations for emergency equipment and projects that require some immediate attention. So just a little bit of where we were back when we adopted the budget in June of 2018. We were looking at a structural deficit of $159,000 with a ending reserve estimated to be at about 16%. Where we are now is we've received some additional information based on where our fiscal year 2017-18 budget ended as well as some very nice trends that we're seeing in terms of increases in our sales tax. The Santa Claus County Assessors Office issued their assessed valuations in August of 2018, which increased our property tax projections that we're making. And so some of the major revenue adjustments that we're looking at are related to property tax. Two different funding sources that we have there are current secured, which is our, most of our residential and commercial property tax. That'll see an increase of about $58,000 for this year as well as our property tax in lieu of VLF. So back in 2005, the great state of California decided that they were going to stop sending vehicle license fees to the cities. In lieu of that vehicle license fees, they are now sending us property tax. So the benefit that we have is that as our property tax increases, then we also see an increase in this revenue source. The downside is during the recession, rather than receiving a vehicle license fee that is going to be pretty fixed because people will tend to keep their vehicles for a number of years. We now have a funding source that is also, also goes up and down with the economy. And so during a downturn in the economy, then we'll see this funding source decrease as well. Sales tax, we're looking at an additional $100,000 in sales tax. Our businesses continue to flourish, particularly out in our crossroads shopping center and so we are definitely seeing the benefits of that as well as some accounts that were delinquent and that were actually reporting under the wrong jurisdictions and we're seeing those revenues come in properly to the city of Riverbank. We're also had an advanced payoff of our Riverbank Oil Transfer Loan. So back in 2008, 2009, we issued a loan to Riverbank Oil Transfer who was located at the Riverbank Industrial Complex. That loan was actually obtained from the Santa Claus County Economic Development Bank. Unfortunately, they defaulted on the loan, but we were able to reach a settlement agreement with them for the repayment. They were to repay over the course of five years. And what they've done is they've made two years' worth of payments and then this year, they went ahead and paid off the other three years that were outstanding. And so this is one-time monies. We will not see this funding source in the future since their loan is now fully satisfied. And so overall, we're looking at about a $330,000 increase in revenues that were unanticipated during the preparation of the preliminary budget in June. In terms of expenditures, we're looking at a couple of decreases with the major one being in our legal. So a lot of the expenses that we have had with legal have been reimbursable, particularly since their work has been primarily based working on the Roman DA, working on the Crossroads EIR, which are all fully reimbursable by those developments. Our planning, we're looking at adding $26,000 in order to fund an assistant and associate planner. Currently, we've had somebody working in that position sort of on a temporary basis. It's time to move away from that temporary employment and make that now a full-time employment. Those costs will be directly offset by the savings we will have in the planning contract that we have with J.B. Anderson Land Use Planning. We're looking at a $55,000 increase in our police services contract. That was an item that the City Council made a decision on at the last council meeting and we just wanted to make sure that we had the budget authority for that. And in terms of parks, we are recommending the purchase of a piece of equipment that they need in order to facilitate some of the work they're doing, particularly since they're working in such tight spots. We wanted to make sure that they're working with the proper equipment. Overall, for our expenditures, we're looking at a $1,900 decrease from those that were projected. So a lot of savings were built in and you might have noticed from the exhibit that was attached to the staff report, savings that were associated with staffing vacancies that we've had as well as some changes that were a result of the negotiations from labor, particularly some of the benefit savings in terms of our employees now picking up a portion of their health insurance. And so where are we now? So back then, we were looking at a structural deficit. Now we're looking at a structural surplus, definitely somewhere a city wants to be. So we're looking at about $180,000 structural surplus with a 26% reserve. You'll notice that this table here starts off with an amended beginning reserve. Typically, an amendment means that your estimate at the end of the last fiscal year has changed. When we run our fiscal year, we end at June 30th, but yet we keep our books open in order to accrue revenue attributable to that fiscal year for about a three or four-month period. And so when you prepare a budget in June, but yet your books are still open for another three or four months after that, that has a lot of influence on where your reserve will end. We also have expenses that came in under budget last fiscal year, which also increased the reserve amount to begin with. And so that's why we are looking at a healthy 26% reserve for the end of this current fiscal year. Some of the other major funds that we're looking for to adjust with regards to our sewer fund, a couple of adjustments there in terms of revenues and expenses. Most of the expenditures have to do with emergency repairs that have been made at our wastewater treatment plant. We're also looking to transfer some monies. And so any transfers between budgets that are over $5,000 require the approval of the City Council. So it's not necessarily new revenue that's coming in. It's revenue that we're moving from one fund to another. In this particular case, the Parks and Recreation Director has asked for a transfer from our Facilities Improvement Fund to our Parks Grant Fund, which is where we're currently funding this community center project. So we're going to offset some of those costs with the Facilities Improvement Fund. So every time we collect a rental fee for our community center, for our scout hall, a portion of that fee goes to this Facility Improvement Funds. Our Recreation Fund, we're looking at an increase in revenue there for some of the programs that our Parks and Recreation staff has ongoing. And we're also allocating about $10,000 of that for our top-time program, which was omitted from the original budget. Our CDBG Fund, we're setting some funds aside and we're kind of earmarking that. Although we typically always do housing loans, these funds can also be used for ADA projects. So we haven't been as successful with issuing loans due to the way the market has been. And so we wanted to earmark some of those that if we were not able to issue any loans within the next four months, then we would be able to transfer those over towards ADA projects in some of the older areas of town. And then, as I mentioned, the Facility Improvement Fund is moving funds from one account to another for the Community Center project. And one final big-ticket item is looking at Phase Two of the Morel Road undergrounding. So our original crossroads development paid a special fee in order to underground all of the utilities along Morel Road. And so this will go from Oakdale Road to Jackson, I believe, or maybe slightly before that. The funding has been there and so Phase One was MID completing some of their engineering. Phase Two is AT&amp;T and Charter completing their engineering. Once those are complete, then we hope to be able to get all of the engineering plans together and go out to bid for this project. And so where are we going? So we've seen our budget kind of do really a 180, going from structural deficit to a structural surplus. But that doesn't mean that, you know, there aren't things in the horizon that we shouldn't be aware of. First of all, property values and sales tax continue to grow and flourish as our economy continues to grow as well. There are some differing opinions on when we might expect a recession and everybody is kind of on bated breath because we know it's coming. We're just not sure when. We've got economists who say, well, we're looking at unemployment trends and we continue to see that unemployment rate decrease nationwide. And so that for us is a good indicator that the economy is continuing to flourish. And then we kind of hear the opposite from our investment bankers, which say, well, the two-year treasury yield is exceeding the 10-year treasury yield and that for us is an indicator that a downturn is imminent. And so it's kind of hard to, you know, look forward and project when you're, when you're hearing two very reliable sources kind of giving you differing opinions. But that doesn't mean that we can't plan now for what will eventually come. And so that's why we're going to be recommending, both the City Manager and I, that we have a serious discussion about what we do with the fact that there is a recession coming. And so we do have concurrently excess reserves that we may want to look at and set aside for that recession. So we're beginning our fiscal year 2019-20 budget. Some of the major expenditures that we're going to want to take into consideration for that are filling of staff vacancies and staffing needs as we're anticipating growth. You're going to be hearing pretty soon about our Crossroads West development and so that's going to have an impact not only on the growth of the city, but also on the growth of our staff. Upcoming renegotiations for our sheriff's contract. We've already had one contract amendment with regards to the addition of that second deputy two position and some of our deputies being eligible for that and the financial impact of that, plus then just a total renegotiation of the contract itself. Increasing costs in personnel, particularly Calpers and our health insurance. One of the projects that the City Manager and I have been working on is an evaluation of our Calpers unfunded liability and what that's going to look like in the future. So we're hoping that either the first or second meeting in March, you're going to be listening to our consultant who we've been working with to hear what some of those projections are. We have some deferred maintenance on city buildings and infrastructures that we need to address and then as well as stormwater-related expenses, not only infrastructure-wise, but also with making sure that we're satisfying the requirements of our MS4 permit. We've got some continued interest in new development and then we're going to need to look at some general fund subsidies, not only for our maintenance of efforts. So our maintenance of effort is set by the state of California. This is a level of general fund monies that you must expend in order to receive those different funding sources. In this case, it's gas tax SB1 and Measure L. One of the items that we will need to look at for this upcoming budget is subsidizing the gas tax fund since the operations portion of it that we receive is not sufficient to fund the maintenance of our roads. And here, and I apologize for the small print, it's just a really quick overview, kind of a two-year forecast and is a preview of the five-year forecast that you'll be seeing in September. Overall, our budget is doing well. We are going to lose a couple of funding sources next fiscal year that will impact our budget and will take us back into a structural deficit, but that will continue to keep our levels of reserve healthy. And so for the 2019-20 fiscal year, I'm estimating an ending reserve of about 20%. And with that, we are recommending approval of the mid-year budget adjustments that were presented to you as part of Exhibit A in the staff report and I'm available for any questions.
Just a quick question. So our current general fund reserve is 10%. What would you recommend us moving it up to 15?
So actually, I'd say about three years ago, we prepared a study on what we believe our general fund reserve should be. And there's different philosophies in terms of the level that you should have. Some agencies state that you should have at least three months' worth of operations funds there. Others set a percentage, which is what our City Council has decided to do. When we looked at it in that format, we actually projected that we should have a 25% reserve, which is currently where we're estimating to be at the end of the fiscal year. Is that sustainable for our small agency? No, it's not. I think 10%, given the fact that we haven't had any major catastrophes, and I'm knocking on wood over here, is appropriate for an agency our size.
If I could just add, part of the discussion is, we talk about a lot, is you could set any percentage, but if it's not a realistic number, then you never get to it anyway. And with what we know is happening with our increases in cost with regard to PERS, we think it's sort of more and more unlikely that we're going to be able to meet anything too far above 10%, though, you know, it's always worth looking at if we see experience that shows us that.
This is a public hearing. Looking for public comment. Seeing no public comment, I close public hearing, bring it back to the council. Um, just to go off on what uh the City Manager just stated, our PERS cost estimates from now is one point eight million, but will go up over two hundred percent, six point four million through twenty forty. And an example.
An example of our PERS contribution in two thousand fourteen was three hundred and fifteen thousand. Our contribution next year is projected to be six hun- no, six hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. So you can see exponentially that increase is going, and that's not your unfunded liability, that's just your contributions. Um, in twenty twenty-five, those who are still employed at the City of Riverbank will be supporting two point five retirees. So that cost is gonna continue to expand. At the same time, the state legislature is restriction, restricting CalPERS from investing in certain things that they find um not into the uh mindset of California. Um, if you do business with Smith and Wesson, but you're not making weapons, they won't invest in you no matter how good you are. So it's very difficult to find an investment that uh will satisfy the growth needs of the um, the retire- retired population. And not only that, those old folks are living longer, so we have to pay longer into the system for them. The actuaries are showing that, that with the increased uh age, um, it's uh just really taxing. So they may be putting one point uh four or five uh people in at twenty twenty-five, but it is going to continue to grow as um the baby boomers completely retire and Gen X is one holding the bag. So with that, we don't have a reserve. Because if we don't pay it, you know, we lose out. That's why we need to figure out what we are going to do. That's one of the biggest things. I went to the State of the City for Houston the other, last night. They have a three hundred percent reserve. But they haven't done CIP in, since two thousand seven. Uh, they have a um, a lot of um vacancies that they have not filled, and they have minimized their services. They're now looking at expanding, and I'm thinking, you know, you better be careful because there is a recession coming. What that, what that recession will look like, we don't know. Will it be um a real estate uh driven recession? Will it be a war-driven recession? Or will it be um some other type of social or um economic stimulus for a recession? So our reserve, no matter how, I'm glad it's as healthy as it is, um, in the future does not, is not really a reserve. So, any further discussion or comments for Maricela?
I'd just like to say that I think Maricela's done a great job in the past years that I've worked with her on our budget, because this is one of our better budgets. But as the mayor said, don't let the increases that we have in it fool you. We are facing some hard times ahead of us.
And on the VLF, are they paying what uh us equal, uh equal to what the increases for licensing?
It has to be equal to, but they consider it a, since they consider it a property tax now, they factor in that growth, and so it's not dollar for dollar.
Okay, I didn't think so. All right, um. Do we have some, anyone wanting to recommend that we consider this um mid-year budget amendments? To approve the mid-year budget amendments?
I make a motion that we accept uh Item five point one as stated.
I second.
We have a motion to approve uh the mid-year budget with its amendment and a second.
Councilmembers Campbell.
Yes.
Fossey.
Yes.
Uribe.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item five point two, resolution approving the LRA fiscal year twenty eighteen nineteen mid-year budget amendments.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, LRA, our one LRA employee will be giving that report this evening.
This is so lonely. Good evening, Chair and Authority members. Um, I've had a chance to review the budget for this year, and I am recommending some adjustments to the budget for your consideration. So an overview of the budget changes, our revenue. We did receive an OEA supplemental grant through the rest of this calendar year. And um, so we're gonna be receiving funds again through uh the middle of the next fiscal year. And you'll see that in the next fiscal budget. I've only accounted for the first six months through June thirtieth in the budget changes. Um, there's been a reduction in rent with losses of tenants, and that unfolds in the utility revenue going down as well. Um, we have a sale of presses to tenant has been delayed. It was included at the beginning of the budget year, but we have some cleaning to do of one of the presses, and so it's been held up. Um, expenditures, our phone data lines, we've removed quite a few of them, and it's lowered the phone costs. Um, unanticipated well-maintenance repairs, we've had quite a few this year. Uh, electrical PMs, we got minimal maintenance going on with those this year uh due to not having a contract with the master developer. Uh, negotiations taking place, we just did not fulfill that contract in this calendar year. Um, common area costs have decreased with the loss of a large utility user. Repair budget significantly reduced to prevent the agency from being in a structural deficit. Security, minimum wage increase on January first increased our costs. And the marketing branding budget, I removed that for this calendar year or for this fiscal year and hoping to add it into the next calen- in the next fiscal year. Hopefully, we'll have a transfer by then. Revenue adjustments, I've decreased revenue by a hundred and twenty-one thousand. Expense adjustments have been reduced by fifty-three thousand. So recap of the amended budget, we're pretty much flat with a net revenue of about four thousand dollars at the end of this fiscal year, which, as a reminder, any revenue that's generated on the site has to be reinvested in the site. So uh, that is going to, if there is, is any revenue net at the end of the year, it will go into a capital improvement project so that we can retain those funds. So my recommendation is to approve the local redevelopment authority mid-year budget as amended.
This is a public hearing. I open it for public comment. Seeing no public comment, I close public comment, bring it back to the uh LRA Board. We um had a visit from the EPA in December. We don't know what the report, if any, are coming down.
We are actually um in talks with our representative from the US EPA, the local representative that did make that visit. And we are trying to uh get a conference call together. We have not received a letter as of yet.
The cleaning of the press, we met their standard, and then they changed their standard.
We actually, um, out of the, I believe there's eleven presses, it might be more, I can't recall. There's four that are for one tenant that is going to be purchasing them. And three of them have met the levels that are required, but there's one press that hasn't. And so we had not gotten uh approval from the EPA for um.
The. The method by which we proposed to clean it. Essentially, the, the short version of a very long story is that there's a particulate matter number that it has to be below. The paint is what carries this particular contaminant. And so we have proposed essentially how we think we can fix that problem, and the EPA needs to approve that method, and they have not thus far.
It was an option in the ESCA.
Yeah.
So basically, that machine is at thirteen parts per million, and it needs to be at below ten. So we're pretty close, but not all the way.
And that was part of your budget?
It was part of the ESCA budget, yes.
All right.
Want to make a motion to approve Item five point two?
Second it.
Well, a motion to approve the LRA uh year budget Item five point two in a second.
Authority members Campbell.
Yes.
Fossey.
Yes.
Uribe.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item six point one, reconsideration of a moratorium on the processing and issuance of additional permits for a cannabis dispensary within the City of Riverbank.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As Council's well aware, and I won't go through the full history here, but the Council approved two dispensary applications in fiscal year seventeen eighteen. Um, after, after which, um, it was a, obviously a very um controversial time and difficult items to get through. Uh, the Council considered a moratorium on any retail dispensaries uh after those two approvals to evaluate both businesses, to make sure that we sort of got a real picture of, of how the operation actually worked, whether we were seeing any significant spillover issues as a result of the actual business. And um, we've reported back on the first business um just recently at the beginning of the year with regard to, to their operation. And our, our second dispensary located down uh Third Street here has only been open for about a little over a month and a half. And so we don't have enough experience um with that particular business to do an assessment yet. But as part of their development agreement, we'll be bringing it back as, yeah, with, within a year to um review their compliance with their development agreement. Uh, as such, um, the moratorium that the Council originally placed expired, or was set to expire in January. Uh, staff agendized an item for that discussion. At that time, um, there was minimal attendance and no comment um on that item. Uh, Council voted for one to extend the moratorium for a no.
Three two.
Uh, you, well, okay, yeah, three two, to uh, uh, extend the moratorium for a one-year period. Uh, and subsequent to that, we received a number of letters from not only the public, but interested applicants that did not speak during the public comment period. At the next meeting, we had a number of public comments on, on the matter. Uh, a couple Council members expressed an interest to see the item revisited so that we could get that public comment, because as, again, as um we talk about every meeting, public comment that's given, that's not agendized, related to an item, the Council cannot get into a debate or discussion or make a decision on those matters. Uh, so uh, the point of this item tonight is that any comment that was not received during the actual agenda hearing could be presented. I would like to point out two very important things. Um, one is that uh this is not a consideration of any particular application for uh cannabis retail businesses. It is simply a policy decision with regard to whether or not the, the uh city would accept and review applications, whether or not they chose to approve those. Um, in fact, uh, any approval or extension of the moratorium would say essentially nothing to whether or not the city may choose to approve or not approve a, an application, whether it be a month from now or a year and a month from now. Um, so it's, I think it's just important, just so that the, the conversation is focused, that this is related to the whole of Riverbank and a policy decision of whether or not applications will be considered again during this moratorium period. Uh, and anything aside or addition to that is not part of this agenda item. It should not be, it cannot be ruled on. Um, secondly, uh, the, uh, it is also kind of important to uh remind Council that regardless of the decision, whether it be to ex- to continue the, the decision that had been made uh two meetings ago for a one-year moratorium or any other option that Council may decide on, that it will be your last opportunity for a moratorium. The moratoriums can only be extended twice at the end of the second one, regardless of the timeframe. Council will need to make a permanent decision on whether to accept applications moving forward or to close down retail applications altogether uh for the foreseeable future uh through an ordinance amendment. So um, there, we, we outlined, or outlined a number of different options available to Council based on some of the discussions that have happened since the meeting and, and also during the meeting. Allow existing moratorium to continue, which will expire in January of twenty twenty. Reduce the existing moratorium to six months and allow it to expire on July of uh twenty-third of nineteen, excuse me. Um, or cause the existing moratorium to expire immediately uh today, February twenty-sixth. So um, or you could make an existing moratorium permanent and direct staff to return with an ordinance amending the Riverbank Municipal Code to, to remove that as an allowable use, aside from our existing grandfathered uses. So I'd be, and I'd be happy to answer any questions on that, but it's essentially the same discussion, but hopefully with more public comment this time.
Sean, with the, um, if the moratorium is lifted, no matter how many applicants you have, does not mean that any one of them will come to the Council.
Uh, so, uh, that is correct. It may, there's a two-step process that they must go through before it ever meets, meets Council. It needs to go through a um staff-level review, where we sort of review completeness of the application. If it's not complete, it gets kicked out. The second level is the Planning Commission review. None of, the Planning Commission is the sole decider on the use permit, correct? So we set the process up intentionally that you needed, it's like turning a nuclear lock. You need two keys to put in. Um, and the first key is the use permit from the Planning Commission. If that is approved, then the Council will hear a development agreement item. And if they, those are both approved, then the business is approved. If one is approved and not the other, then the, the business is not approved, and it's not able to move forward. Uh, so, correct, they don't, there's no guarantee that anyone would even make it to the City Council.
And Flavors has been a stellar contributor to the community. They had only one incident, and that was um, one of their employees decided to take a break in the car with his girlfriend. His girlfriend was smoking, he was fired. There's been complaints about marijuana use when the police go and, and seize the marijuana. It's low-grade, it's not what's been sold in dispensaries. But there has been a decline in the sell on the black market of marijuana, but we haven't decreased the um methamphetamine or the, that's crystal meth, or heroin. We have not yet done that, but that is, um, hopefully, without further bringing our kids into the black market, that will eventually reduce. Now, the moratorium is saying that if Flavors moves to Modesto, we're not going to replace it. Moratorium, if we make it permanent, says no new ones come in, and if the others go away, we're not going to replace them. Flavors has been the second most productive dispensary in Northern California. I got that from uh Ronan Roberts, or Ron Roberts, um, last week. And has contributed significantly, allowing us to increase the number of our police officers that we decreased in two thousand eight because of the recession. And we have a recession coming on up. I don't see that going away right now. Having the ability to have other dispensaries will be in the benefit of the City of Riverbank. You may choose to say, I want it in certain locations. In fact, for me, I would rather say, get someplace where it's down, downgraded, and have them bring it up to a, a different standard and uh before we consider it. But putting a moratorium on it severely restricts our movement in the next year, as it has last time, last year. And because if we lift it, does not necessarily mean anybody who's in the applicant will be approved either through the Planning Commission or here at the Council. So my recommendation would be to remove the moratorium and explore where we, through staff and Council, where we would like uh the, any, if any, future dispensaries to go.
So I'd like to say, um, my stance hasn't changed since January. Um, so I'm, I'm leaning still towards Option Three, uh, ending the moratorium as well um because of the oversight that the staff, uh, it has been effective. And, and I, I believe that they will maintain those standards as well.
My recommendation is for number four. I just feel that um, Riverbank is not a huge city, and the moratorium, I mean, the uh, um, current businesses that we have right now, I just feel like we don't need anymore. So that's, I recommend number four.
My recommendation is to stay with the year that we did prior. My reason for that is we just had one of the cannabis dispensaries open up. They are just getting started. They're in an area that isn't quite as populous as the area where Flavors is. And I think that we need to give them a chance to succeed and evaluate what's happening before we, so we can see if we actually need another cannabis dispensary in our community. So I would like to stay with that just because I think it's fair to those people that have just opened up.
I agree with Cal, number one.
As we put the moratorium into effect, it was a contentious meeting, and it was an afterthought to say, hey, well, we'll put a moratorium, moratorium in to kind of soothe people. And I guess, so at the end of this moratorium year, if that is approved, it's either we accept it or we reject cannabis. And if anything goes away, we don't put a new one in. That's what we're looking at.
Yeah, I think you're right there, Mayor. And as I said, I think a year's time would be enough time to let this dispensary that has invested a lot of money and time in our community in an area where there isn't a great deal of business in hopes of helping to improve the business. I think we should give them a reasonable chance at the time later on this year. We can reevaluate and decide if we want to take the moratoriums away permanently. And then that lets us have the opening, that we can add future dispensaries. And we'll also have the knowledge based on how this new dispensary is done, that we really need this or not. If for some reason they're not selling a whole lot of the product, then maybe we don't need that extra dispensary right now.
I think we should be fair to all businesses and lift the moratorium and allow any business that would want to come in and let the, let the, let the public decide who's going to be successful or not.
I know myself, and I think Cal agrees, that we've talked with citizens and they would like us to take it slow. They want us to only have the two right now. I think waiting a year, seeing how the second one does and getting their report is what I've heard from the citizens. Having more than two right now is not what they're, they're ready for.
And I have also talked to some citizens that say that Riverbank is a small city and two is enough, and they don't want to see any more coming in. So.
Okay. Anyone from the public wish to comment?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Angel. I do represent a cannabis company. I believe that the city of Riverbank would benefit in more than one way from lifting a moratorium on cannabis businesses. It could bring more revenue to the city of Riverbank in the form of cannabis tax. I do want to inform the community and the Council that there are other types of cannabis businesses that are not storefront that could potentially bring benefit to the city of Riverbank in the form of revenue without having a major impact on the community. I understand that there's a problem with public consumption, and I do agree with what somebody said earlier. I do believe that maybe onsite consumption could be potentially a solution in the long run for that, for that problem. But I do think that the city of Riverbank should keep an open mind and consider other types of businesses that would bring revenue to the city that are not storefront dispensaries. I do agree, you know, Riverbank is a small city. Two dispensaries is more than enough for people to walk in. But there are other types of dispensaries, there are other types of businesses, like a delivery, a delivery-only business, for example, wouldn't have any foot traffic. There wouldn't be any signage. It would be a quiet business. And the city of Riverbank would still see that, that positive impact in the form of revenue. And it would open up the opportunity for businesses like us to help the community with whatever projects they may need, you know, to inform the community of the benefits of cannabis, to, you know, to follow in Flavors' footsteps and bring a significant positive impact to the community. So with that being said, I think you should take all, consider, all that into consideration. And there are two sides of the story, you know. There is medical and recreational. We want to do only medical. So we're providing a service to people who cannot leave their houses, people that are disabled, people in wheelchairs, people that don't have the option to get up and go to the store. So I believe that there are different aspects that should be looked at when considering lifting this moratorium. But I do believe that a lift could benefit the community of Riverbank in a positive way. And we hope that this changes your mind or that this has some impact on your decision today. So, any questions?
Can you clarify, what kind of marijuana facilities are you promoting right now?
So we're interested in starting a cannabis business where it's going to be delivery-only. So it's going to be for medical patients only and a delivery only. So somebody walking by could not go in and buy cannabis. It's only going to be for our, for the people in the city of Riverbank and the surrounding areas. But all the tax revenue would still go to the city of Riverbank. The state of California, I believe, this past January passed their permanent regulations, and they allow deliveries to be made in any city in the state of California. So we could bring revenue not just from the residents here in the city of Riverbank, but also from surrounding cities. Because when we deliver out to a different city, that revenue is going to come back to the city of Riverbank because we're based out of Riverbank.
And where would this, do you have an idea where you would be located?
We do. We actually have a location already. It's thirty-two hundred Atchison Street. We have, we're in talks with the landlord already. We have been in talks with a couple members of the council meeting. I believe Sean Bean, one of them. I believe he could, he could bring you up to speed with what's going on. We are, we are ready to proceed when the city of Riverbank gives us okay. We want to reach an agreement with the city of Riverbank. And I believe if you give us opportunity, you'll see that we could really benefit this community in more, more than one way without having a significant negative impact. So, and like, like somebody said earlier, the cannabis being consumed out on the streets is not cannabis that's being bought at dispensaries. And if you open up another opportunity for legal cannabis, then you're having an even greater impact on the black market. Because that's another source for people to, to buy safe, you know, safe, reliable medicine. So, and I mean, we can, we do have testimonials from patients. We can bring patients in. And a lot of the people that we help are people that don't have, like, I mean, I know I'm repeating myself now, but that cannot leave their house to get cannabis. So I think a delivery-only option could really benefit everybody.
But that's still a dispensary.
It's still a retail, it's a retail business, not exactly a dispensary. We are retail. We're a non-storefront medical, non-storefront medical delivery. Yes.
So if we go to number four, you can't be here.
Exactly.
If you go to number four, can't-
Nobody can be here, exactly. Right.
Okay.
So I think, you know, maybe open it up to a different kind of business and see how a different kind of business would impact the city of Riverbank instead of just opening up dispensaries. Because there's a lot of, like I said, there's different types of permits and there's different types of cannabis businesses that I, that we believe could, could benefit the community. So, anything else?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you guys for listening.
Mayor, before we get to the next one, I just want to just, I know I'm a broken record here, but just reiterate that you're going to hear a lot of detail regarding specific proposals and projects. That is not what you're deciding tonight.
That's right. All we're doing is deciding whether or not- Well, that's a dispensary. That is a dispensary. It's the same thing.
Yeah.
So, but the state of California is considering doing it without local control, and we're fighting that. Okay. Any further comment? And again, we're not considering, if we say we drop the moratorium, nobody's going to be considered right now.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council members. My name is Tiffany Von Alvin-Slaben. I'm one of four partners of the third dispensary that was being considered here in Riverbank. We definitely appreciate Council revisiting the possible change in the current moratorium status, and we hope that it is lifted so that we can open for business and become a revenue contributor to the city of Riverbank. It is and always has been our goal to take the building we have purchased, not leased, from a current ISO that it currently is to the public, to an incredible retail space that the city can honestly be proud of. It has repeatedly been stated that it is the concern to the Council that the three locations are within close proximity to each other. When we began this process of coming into the city of Riverbank, we were all given very specific zoned areas where we could possibly be allowed to have a dispensary to be owned and operated. We then purchased our building within the area the city would allow. We submitted applications, paid fees, to secure our opportunity to operate there. And after quite some time and money, we were allowed to be one of the three that were being considered. We've tried to be very patient and followed every request the city has made of us to try to make this happen. We have based every move we have made on the guidelines that have been given to us from the city. For the issue of proximity to come up now seems a tad bit unfair considering these were the only areas allowed and available to us at the time. It is, if competition is the true concern, I guess our confusion honestly comes from the fact that Riverbank has many grocery stores that are very close to each other, fast food restaurants, as well as gas stations and liquor stores, all within similar distances that should prove to all of us that the city can tolerate multiple locations even at close proximities. It has always been our focus to complement our competitors by exhibiting great business practices and a professional courtesy to both of the other dispensaries, to attempt to create a relationship based on sharing ideas, promoting each other's strength, instead of focusing on each other to hurt each other, but yet to focus on each other benefiting each other. Our partner also brings ten years of experience in dispensary management and development and is a partner in over thirteen successful current dispensaries throughout Sacramento and the Bay Area. In closing, we are hoping we can have the moratorium lifted so the three families who have, one, sold a business, vested time and money, can have the same opportunity the other two dispensaries have had to open and become productive members of the city and your community. Thank you.
Just to reiterate, we're not here considering any other dispensaries. We're only here to consider the moratorium, whether we lift it or not, no matter where it is and what a dispensary is, whether it, you know, if we, if we go to number four, we stop all processes. So that's, that's an extreme concern.
And I'd just like to make a comment. And I know that you guys, with your dispensary, for the lady that just spoke, that you've put some time into it. But you're going through a process. That process isn't completed until the final step. We're the final step. There was no guarantees at the time that you started that that would happen because we had the final say.
Is this about the moratorium? Yes. Okay.
I'm not going to comment on Riverbank.
Thank you.
I'm in support of the first option, waiting a year and just seeing how the businesses play out. Through no fault of, you know, our second dispensary's own, we've opened late due to our property owner, and they've had a good head start. And it would be nice to be able to have the same kind of time. But I don't support completely closing it off to any future dispensaries. Riverbank's going to grow, and I think you should be able to grow with it. And we support other cannabis businesses. Just, I support, you know, delivery businesses. I support more retail. I support cultivation. So we're fully in support of more growth here, just giving us a little bit of time. So we support number one.
Can I make one more comment?
Sure.
Okay. Councilman under Fossey made a comment along with Councilmember Martinez about the public show. There was a stir when dispensaries were first brought into the community. I don't want us to move too fast because we were, when this first started too, accused of just trying to get into this business for the money that we were getting out of it. There was more to it than that. Yes, we are getting some money that's going to help us with our police force, which we need very badly. But at the same time, I think the, we just put our first dispensary in a year ago. I think waiting another year and then opening up, I'm not against opening it up at a point. I just want a reasonable time to let this other dispensary get off on its feet because they're taking a big risk with where they're located. And likewise, I want the public to see that we are not just putting them here and there as quick as we can.
Not yet. Any further public comment?
As you know, I've been a resident of downtown for over fifty years. And I participated in the signatures and everything that went on before. When you did the moratorium in the beginning, it was for evaluation of the two dispensaries in their respective neighborhoods, one on the west side, one downtown. For whatever reasons, the one downtown just got started. Now you're saying, well, that's okay, as long as we evaluate the one on the west side, we don't need to evaluate the one downtown. We'll just go ahead and do it and not evaluate at all. It's not what you told us when you did the moratorium. When you passed that marijuana resolution, almost all of the zoning for marijuana dispensaries and whatever is downtown, the Pacific Plant Area, downtown. And now you're telling us, we don't need to evaluate the one downtown? We'll just open it up and do it anyway?
I don't want to interrupt you, Evelyn, but I actually said the exact opposite of that during my report. We will be reviewing and evaluating them during their, once their one-year period is up. But it doesn't make any sense to evaluate them after one month. We need a little bit of experience.
Exactly. That's what I'm saying. They need to be evaluated the same way as Flavors was on the west side. The fact that they're downtown shouldn't negate your promise to us that you were going to evaluate, as you said, both dispensaries in their respective neighborhoods. Personally, I don't support either one of them. I mean, I'm agree with number four. I agree with Vice Mayor. But you should at least give it the one year or you should at least evaluate both of them.
Okay. You want to make, any further public comment? Say no, and I bring it back to the Council.
I make a motion that we accept six point one, number one. I need a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmembers Campbell.
Wait, wait, wait. I'll give it to you in a moment. So we're continuing a moratorium on marijuana dispensaries. Is legal, is there a true definition of the dispensary? Would the dispersing of cannabis from a delivery system count as a dispensary? That does? So if someone wants to do a grow and distribute to dispensaries, is that a dispensary?
No. It's only, the definition falls under retail versus wholesale. So distribution, packaging, testing, all of those other, and we do have applications on some of those that are active currently. Those are not affected.
Okay. We have a motion to approve item six point one, item section one, and a second.
Councilmembers Campbell.
Yes.
Fossey.
Yes.
Uribe.
No.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
No.
Mayor O'Brien.
No.
Motion fails. Two, three.
I'll make a motion that we approve six point one, option three.
I'll second that. We have a motion to approve six point one, option three.
Councilmembers Campbell.
No.
Fossey.
No.
Uribe.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
No.
Mayor O'Brien.
No.
Let's see here. We have two, we have four no's and one, motion fails. Four, one, four.
Do we have a motion for six point two or six point four?
I make a motion for six point one, number four.
So you're, this is to not allow any more dispensaries ever?
Yes.
Okay. Saying no, second.
No second.
Then all motions fail, and we go to item six, actually.
What about option number two there?
No. You want to do a motion on that? That's not, go ahead. I'm not going to predict it.
Yeah, I'll make a motion for six point one, option two then.
I second.
Two, same here. Second. Okay. Councilmembers Campbell.
Can I ask a question before I vote? I just want clarification. If we go for the six months, could we renew that again if we chose to?
No.
No, you do.
That's, that's what I want to-
At the end of the six, a permanent decision is made ala item four or allow applications permanently.
Okay. Yes.
Fossey.
No.
Uribe.
Yes.
Barbara Martinez.
No.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Okay, we have two no's and three yes. Motion passes three, two. For the six month. And I just wanna clarify that with that resolution, we will need to include in there that we rescind, uh, resolution twenty nineteen zero zero one for the one-year moratorium. So, it will be amended. This resolution presented will be amended.
When was their opening date? Wasn't it in December?
Flavors?
No.
December twentieth.
Yeah, I mean, was that your actual first day of business or was it, it bled into January a little bit, right?
Well, no, that was our first day, yeah.
Oh, okay.
When, when, when everything was.
So, it.
Be seven, eight months.
Yeah.
Yep.
And so, we will, and we will bring back a full review after one year, um, as we did with Flavors.
Okay, item six point two, resolution authorizing purchase of property located at thirty-two thirty-four Santa Fe Street. Assessors parcel number one-three-two dash zero-one-one dash zero-one-seven. Authorizing the city manager to execute necessary documents to complete the sale and authorize an appropriation of three hundred and two thousand dollars from the system development fee account to purchase of the property.
Thank you very much, Mayor. So, um, in the back, um, I believe there's plenty of copies. If not, we can get more. But there's a handout that was not included in the agenda. This is the LoopNet listing of the particular property we're speaking about tonight. Um, that property is located at thirty-two thirty-four Santa Fe Street. Uh, the Riverbank City Council recently approved a spatial analysis, which is intended to review the current short-term and long-term physical space needs for the ongoing operation of city services. During the process of developing, uh, developing that RFP, um, it kind of required us to sort of review our current spatial needs. And one of the things that's pretty clear to most staff that have been here a long time and, and now me in my short time here, is that we are essentially at capacity. We have in City Hall South nearly no additional office or cubicle space for new staff. Uh, and very similar in this building. Uh, and so, the question was, while we go through this spatial analysis, while it's a, a, a important and great exercise, it really doesn't solve our short-term space needs. And so, um, I began, uh, along with staff to sort of look at other options, uh, along those lines. And it just so happens that, um, the building located directly behind City Hall South on Santa Fe Street was a property that had been remodeled for a health clinic, um, a couple of years ago. The health clinic ended up going into bankruptcy and it never actually opened. Uh, but they did complete the remodel and they completed their permits, uh, and inspections. Um, so, that being the case, we, we toured the building, took a look at whether or not it's something that we could use as an interim solution for our space needs. Uh, we have not had a discussion internally amongst the management team about what departments we would move there. We would do that as part of the spatial analysis. But one thing we do know is that there's plenty of space available for, you know, what I would call our next five-year period, um, in, in order to, to grow with regard to staffing needs. There are, uh, approximately, ironically, the building is split up into essentially, um, just like you'd see in a small health clinic, about fifteen, uh, individual exam rooms, which almost are exactly the size of a normal kind of office that you would see. So, there's not a ton of, uh, interiors, wall moving and remodel, we immediately anticipate. Um, and they have, uh, kind of set up a, a front, uh, waiting area for the public. There are two conference rooms, one of which could be used as a conference slash break room. There, actually separately, there is also a break room. And, and the second conference room, we've had some discussions about using it for, uh, a, a map room or, or a library for our planning and development services, if that's what ends up being, uh, correct. There's also the ability, since it was split into multiple tenant spaces, to, to break down a couple walls in between offices for slightly larger offices that might be needed for different kinds of employees. So, um, like I said, ironically, it is a building that's sort of built and semi-ready for use. Uh, we, we anticipate that we're going to need to have a contractor take a look at the space and, and, uh, suggest some upgrades. But with regard to technology, with regard to ADA, uh, access, um, and a number of the other checklist items that you sort of need for a public building, it, it seems to have most of those completed already. Uh, as councils aware, I received direction to, um, to approach the bankruptcy trustee through their agent to, uh, see about making an offer. Uh, we've made an offer of three hundred thousand dollars, which is sixty-five thousand dollars less than their asking price. The bankruptcy trustee has indicated to me that, uh, he will be accepting that offer. The next step in the process is that it goes, a bankruptcy court date is going to be scheduled, uh, provided council approves this item tonight. That, uh, offer will go to the bankruptcy court judge if that, um, judge agrees with the price. He will, uh, uh, essentially sign, um, an order that allows the sale to proceed and, and we will be the new owners of, of the building. We have requested budget authority for approximately three hundred and two thousand dollars, which kind of, which includes some of the associated closing costs. And we would recommend that come from general government system development fees. This is a, a, a non-general fund account that we specifically collect for civic buildings and in particular City Hall. Uh, it would leave in a balance of approximately one hundred thousand dollars, which we would recommend set aside for any necessary upgrades, although we don't believe that the budget will be to that level. Um, we are in the process currently of, of additional, um, inspections and evaluation. But at this point, feel fairly confident that it's a, it's a good fit, just given its location, price, and general readiness to use. So, we would recommend approval from this on council and I will be reporting back to council, um, after the bankruptcy court date that I attend. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions before I send it to the public? Anyone from the public wish a comment on item six point two? See no comment on item six point two? Bring it back to the council for consideration.
I make a motion, we approve item six point two.
I second it.
We have a motion to approve and a second on item six point two.
Councilmembers Campbell.
Yes.
Fossey.
Yes.
Uribe.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five, zero.
Item seven one, staff comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just wanted to thank, um, council and staff for attending our strategic planning, uh, session yesterday. As, as, um, we spoke about, there, it was a different session than normal. Um, you know, obviously, any new, um, facilitator you bring in will bring in a different, slightly different style. And so, we hope to refine that with, with her over the next couple sessions we have, um, moving forward. But overall, we were really pleased with the outcome. In fact, if the public's interested, you could see a, a summation of it on this wall that's going to be compiled into a report of, of sort of what we hope to be our work product over the next couple of years. Um, the other item I'd like to do, I'd like to mention and, uh, just because we're very proud of it and I'm very proud of the staff that got it there, was that Kathleen sent, um, Clique, our development services manager, sent me a note this morning, or this afternoon, that the Del Rio offices have finally been issued their improvement plan, uh, approvals to move forward. So, you will see dirt being moved out there and, uh, the foundation for the building being poured and the associated water and sewer improvements. And this is something that's been in the works for many years. Uh, so, we're, and it took quite a bit of effort on staff's part and the applicant's part to get the approval over the finish line. So, I just wanna thank them and, and look forward to seeing that building go up over there. Thank you very much.
That's it for staff. Okay, seven two, councilmember Uribe.
Uh, no public comment tonight.
Fossey.
Uh, one of the things I see, um, as I'm out there driving all the time to crossroads and down here, um, I see people turning, um, into lanes that aren't lanes you're supposed to turn into. Uh, one of the main things I see quite a bit is, um, if you're driving east on Clarabelle and you wanna make a left and you don't know weight to the left turn, people are crossing the striped street to turn left where there's people coming out. As a driver who was coming out one time for somebody trying to come in, please don't. There's a reason that you can't come in because there's no room for you. So, please be aware of where you're turning and whether it is permitted. I also like to thank everybody for their patience while we get that street light inside at Ros, installed at Roselle. Unfortunately, all the rain, it looks like has put a delay on that. But, uh, it'll be there soon. Thank you.
Campbell.
I'm gonna make a comment about the streets also. Uh, the intersection of Old Oakdale Road and, uh, Patterson Road. Uh, it is posted and you can only turn right onto Patterson Road, off of Old Oakdale Road, when that light is flashing or it's a green light, when the, when the light is not flashing. Uh, I live in the area and I, I go by it and countless times I see people that are violating that particular, uh, street that way. And if and when we get that, uh, video in there, video camera in there, I think we're gonna be raking up, uh, some fines because I see at least ten or twelve people a day that are violating that particular, uh, turn.
If it's approved, you can't say.
If it's approved.
Vice Mayor.
I just want to just, uh, talk about Love Riverbank a little bit. Um, one of our members from the public did bring it up, but I just wanna ask, we wanted to save the date for April thirteenth. And, uh, we're currently working on a website so the public can sign up for projects. And I wanna thank the leaders, um, that are stepping up to host our Love Riverbank. Uh, we didn't have a Love Riverbank for twenty eighteen. So, I just wanna applaud them for stepping up and, and taking over and just leading the projects. Um, and I wanna thank our city staff for our reports tonight. Made it real easy for us to understand and, and know what's going on. It's very important that we understand where our monies are. And, um, you know, and also to look at what's coming down in the future. So, I just wanna thank them, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. As you may know, the state has made a decision on distributing cannabis without local control, uh, without really properly licensing it. Has been announced today that, uh, the League of California Cities and a lot of other cities are joining our lawsuit against that. Uh, one of the items that are very, um, is out in public now. That's why I'm talking about it. Okay? Don't, don't look at me like that. One of the items that is very dangerous, uh, if we decide not to have local control, is that, um, within the state, um, anybody can order it because there's an, I, you, you do it anonymously. So, a twelve, fourteen-year-old can go ahead, get a credit card, order it, and pick it up without a signature because it's anonymous. So, we, I still think we have to be very careful as, as we move forward, uh, in some of the, the procedures on cannabis as we, uh, uh, seriously discuss what's going on. There is a new governor and we were awarded, what, three hundred and seventy thousand dollars for a planning grant for wastewater for, uh, regional? Michael?
We were awarded.
Were we?
This is on, Michael, this is on our planning grant for the wastewater treatment plant. Yes, we've been awarded.
But we haven't received it because he's now recon, uh, distributing the grant. So, what we may have received, we may not receive. So, uh, we still have to be planning for the future as this city grows, as water becomes more, um, contentious. So, um, don't give up. That's my encouragement to you is, don't give up. Okay? With that, uh, our next city council meeting is Tuesday, March twelfth, and this meeting is adjourned. Cal, thank you.